Good morning, everybody. I'm going to call the order, the Board of County Commissioners meeting. This is our first regular meeting for the new year of 2022. It is January 11th. And with that, I will have Ms. Candy Ramos. Will you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. I appreciate that. Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Of course. Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Vaughn Hartung, Vice Chair.
Here.
Alexis Hill, Viasum.
Here.
Kitty Jung, Viasum.
Present.
Janie Herman is absent. Assistant County Manager Kate Thomas.
Present.
And Assistant District Attorney Nathan Edwards.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galacini, your county clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I do appreciate that. And I'd like to make just a quick request for those who are participating with us in the audience. This is a business meeting. I will ask that you please be conscientious of that. No outbursts, no, you know, you're allowed to do what you can do and participate in the meeting during public comment, but please no outbursts. Thank you. All right. With that, let's move on to item three. This is public comment. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
All right. Madam Clerk, do we have public comment this morning?
We do. In chambers, we have Melanie Sutton.
All right. Welcome, Ms. Sutton.
Good morning. So I just wanted to let you know I do appreciate you guys putting on the agenda to end the public health emergency on December 14th. I appreciate the things that you did say about it and how you guys voted. The problem is that you guys waited way too long and you guys conditioned the people of Washoe County to be sheep. So still they continue to do so. It was your job to stand up for the people of Washoe County and not relinquish your power to the state and to the federal government. You all, you will be held accountable as far as your exit election. We'll actively campaign and don't worry, we will not forget in 2024 either. Now, we would want to, now I would like to move on to we would like paper ballots. I would like you to protect our votes. Again, this is something that is in your power and Washoe County can move to paper ballots and move away from the machines. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Nicholas St. John.
Mr. St. John, good morning.
Good morning, Messrs. We the people demand that therapeutics be promoted and used to treat all COVID patients at Entroll Hospital. These therapeutics include ivermectin, hydroxychloroquine, budesonide, corticosteroid inhalers, 0.3% food-grade hydrogen peroxide nebulizers, 0.6% chlorine dioxide solution nebulizers, chlorine dioxide solution, which has completely eradicated COVID from Ecuador, Bolivia, and Colombia, plus a regimen of supplements such as NAC 600 to help keep respiratory illnesses from becoming pneumonia, zinc, quercetin, vitamin D3 with K2, a minimum of 6,000mg of vitamin C or 25,000mg of vitamin C intravenous infusion, which I was personally denied at the emergency room of the VA, and also including monoclonal antibody infusions, which some hospitals are now starting to give. These need to be made available and explained to all COVID patients as options for treatments. We demand the termination of the use of remdesivir, which had a 53% fatality rate. Let me repeat that, a 53% fatality rate in previous clinical controlled studies. Patients' rights must be restored. If a patient asks for any of these treatments, they must not be denied. We the people demand that this board, not the bought and paid for Health District Shills, provide at the next BCC meeting three studies completed prior to January 2020 showing that masks can prevent airborne respiratory illnesses. If you cannot provide scientific evidence prior to this COVID pandemic, we demand that you cease and desist all mandatory mask requirements for children and adults alike. The governor cannot make law. Mask mandates are not law. They are based loosely on the CDC Emergency Use Authorized Mask Use Guidelines, which by law cannot be forced on any person without their informed consent as a medical device, and no one except the person's private physician can even advise such use, which can be refused and not complied with without any retribution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy Tibbet.
Welcome, Ms. Tibbet.
Good morning. My name is Sandy Tibbet. We the people demand that Washoe County Board of County Commissioners put on the agenda a resolution to prohibit vaccine passports under the name of passports or any other similar name with any business or government facility for employment, students at all levels of education, and that it will be a criminal offense with penalties of imprisonment and/or fines for discrimination and/or illegal segregation. These vaccines are only given under an emergency use authorization. Therefore, it is against the law to mandate such a vaccination to any person in these United States. Every person in this country has secured rights codified by the U.S. Constitution, which is the highest law of this country and supported by the Supreme Court of the United States, that it cannot be overridden by a pandemic, state constitution, any law, statutes, or ordinances, to be able to refuse any medical device or procedure, including this bogus vaccine. Two, we the people demand that all so-called COVID-19 vaccinations for those ages five to 20 be immediately terminated, as the CDC's own data indicates this age group is not a threat of spreading COVID, and that the chance of death is less than one-fifth that of measles and can be lowered to virtually zero if proven therapeutics would be promoted and used during early detection. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kitty Coons.
Good morning, Ms. Snidiger.
Good morning. For the record, I'm a non-person, non-resident, uninfranchised, natural woman. I'm pretty tired of these rage kills that are going on in the hospital. They are premeditated murder is what they are. And that's been proven. Because everybody knows what these experimental serums are doing to people. They're dying. They're being irreparably damaged. That's murder, because you all know about it. All the doctors know, all the councils know, all the states know, all the attorneys know. And by the way, for your attorney sitting over here, he ought to look into the Clearfield doctrine and City of Independence, Owens versus City of Independence. When you act as a business, which you claim every meeting, Mr. Lucy, that this is a business meeting, that means that's the business of the county, not the business of the people. You never address the people and their concerns at these meetings. This unlawful search without probable cause at every single BCC meeting. It's the only one. It's the only one that has this, and that's for pure intimidation and to keep people away. You're not God. You're not the king. You don't get to tell me what to do. You don't get to tell any of these people what to do, because you have no ownership interest in them, you have no financial interest in them, you have no work-related interest in them. A mandate applies to the internal workings of the government, not to the public at large. You have been violating our civil rights for a year now, more than a year. That's why I don't comply. I don't have to. I'm not one of your statutory citizens that you can use statutes to come after me with. Go ahead, try to trespass me because I don't wear a mask. You won't win. You're stepping outside your authority when you tell people to wear a mask. You don't think so, but I could prove it, and I probably will. But it won't be here in a meeting. It'll be some guy with a black robe. Because I'm sick and tired of you screwing up everything as bad as you screw things up no matter what you touch. You put businesses out of business because of this phony COVID bullshit. And it is bullshit. The CDC has almost come out and said that. There is no such thing as COVID-19 that's a contagion. I'm sick of hearing it on the news. Why are you pushing this rage murder 24/7 everywhere you look? And this is not a quorum here. Those people who are out are not valid.
Janet Butcher.
Welcome, Ms. Butcher.
Happy New Year, and I hope that it will be a happy new year. We've got to move on. We've got to start looking at things properly. Everybody talks about follow the science. Well, we all know, one time we were told salt's not good for you. Salt is good for you. In fact, I had the doctor tell me a couple months ago, I should be eating salt. I stopped eating salt many, many, many years ago, like 50 some. I liked when we said the Pledge of Allegiance that says liberty and justice for all. Liberty means, to me anyway, my interpretation, is not to be forced or coerced into partaking in an experimental injection, only if someone chooses. There have been cruise ships, fully vaccinated people, employees, the USS Milwaukee, fully 100% vaccinated, so-called vaccination, that was put into port in Guantanamo Bay because there were breakouts of COVID. Healthcare and law enforcement and the military have been fired or removed from their positions because they wouldn't partake in an experimental drug. Remember Tuskegee? Also, too, I brought up once about Agent Orange. There is more and more stuff coming out about Agent Orange. I had a former husband who died from complications from Agent Orange. Several friends are, have either died or are in nursing homes because of the complications. Most, a lot of times, most of them with their lungs. There are things we don't really know about, so why are we forcing people? It's unconscionable. Pharmaceutical companies and stockholders are the ones who are profiting.
Will Brokaw. Will Brokaw.
Welcome, sir.
Good morning. My name is Will Brown. I was a firefighter in the city of Sparks for 30 years.
Mr. Brown, can I have you speak into the microphone so we can get it on the?
I'm sorry?
Can I have you speak into the microphone so we can get it on the record, sir? Thank you.
Oh. At any rate, I was a firefighter for 30 years. I retired as a battalion chief in 1993. When I was on the fire department, they had a fire in Las Vegas in a high-rise building, killed over 90 people. And we all were very taken aback by the fact that children, women, everybody, all of these folks that were killed. So we said, what could we do about it? And we started talking to folks and said, how about sprinkler systems in high-rise buildings? We took it to the legislature and we got it approved. It was spread throughout the United, the entire state of Nevada, and even the old buildings were sprinkled as well. Guess how many people have died in high-rise buildings since 1984? Zero. I'd like to seek solutions like this taken before that we have a disastrous problem. They just had a fire in New York that proves the point. My other subject is what's going on at the United States Congress. I am astounded at many of the Republicans politicians. After the attack on our Capitol, many of the Republican officials made strong public statements regarding the attack. When it was revealed that the attackers were Trump supporters and Republicans, nearly all of the Republicans started saying it wasn't an attack. I just want the Republicans to tell us this. Were they lying then, or are they lying now? You can't have it both ways. They also do not attend the examination of documents in Congress where the evidence would be put right in front of them. Any voter that votes for a Republican now is simply saying, I approve of liars representing me in Congress. We should be able to do better than this.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Donna Robinson. Can we have the overhead?
Donna Robinson, for the record, I'm a Lemon Valley resident, and I am here again, and I am again appalled. Colo, Channel 8 did a news story on our ditches in Lemon Valley, where Duane Smith and I believe, I'm probably going to say his name wrong, Eric Crumb, said, oh, they're working perfectly. They're clear. They're absolutely clear. Can I please have the overhead? I have pictures here going back to October, where the ditches are completely full of weeds. This is Tupelo in Idaho. This is in October. This is the ditch on the other side of my residence, full of water in October when it was raining. Again, Tupelo in Idaho, this is Idaho going down to the pumps. How can water get down here? I called Duane Smith a liar and Eric Crumb a liar, because they said nobody has called. Multiple residents have called. One resident right here, this resident here, this is December 23rd, she has called five times, starting in the summer, to get her ditches cleaned, because she knows, and she can't go out and do it herself. Duane Smith said on the record, on a news interview, that Washoe County is responsible for cleaning these ditches out. Where are they? I personally hailed a county worker who was down at Pompeii and area cleaning ditches, supposedly, which I hear from my friends down there, they're clogged too, that, oh, our truck is broke down. When this resident called, oh, our sprayer's broke down. Well, the weeds are dead. They don't need to be sprayed. They need to be cleaned out. Here is Idaho going down to the pumps. Here's a cone in the ditch. That's the news story. This is, and I'm going to kind of go forward, this is today. This is today. This is again Tupelo. This is Idaho coming down to Tupelo. This is Idaho going down to where the pumps used to be. This is that same resident's house. But you know what? It's okay, because Duane Smith and Eric Crumb say they're clear and they're working perfectly. When are you guys going to start holding somebody accountable and having them go out there and clean out these ditches before our houses flood again? Because you know what? It won't be the city of Reno that gets sued next time. It's going to be you guys for neglect. We are being neglected. We don't need a storm utility program. We don't. We already pay for our ditches to be clean. We want our ditches clean. That's all we're asking.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Thank you.
Cindy Martinez.
Welcome, Ms. Martinez.
Good morning. Thank you. Happy New Year. And ma'am, you might want to ask them for some coronavirus money, because that's rolling in like, like nothing else. Your 2022 is going to be a year of reckoning. I thought that it might be a year of midterm elections, but I think that the, a lot of stuff is changing, and we're going to be holding you accountable for what you've done. I sent in an email this morning, and for some reason, SBC Global is editing my emails, and I had to spend another half hour drafting a new email, so I'm going to read this into the record. Dear Washoe County Commissioners, Mr. Kevin Dick, for the record, my name is Cindy Martinez, and I am writing to you in my capacity as a private citizen. Attached here, too, are documents from the linked expose article published by Project Veritas last night regarding Anthony Fauci's lies about his and his agency's involvement in gain-of-function research, which resulted in the virus labeled SARS-CoV-2 and the disease called COVID-19. In short, these documents and the analysis provided by USMC Major Joseph Murphy leave absolutely no doubt as to the nefarious nature of the origins of the virus, as well as the ineffectiveness of the resultant vaccines being pushed upon not only the citizens of Washoe County, but of the citizens of the world. Major Murphy found these documents, which clearly are of a top-secret nature, unclassified and posted to a previously empty electronic folder in the DARPA system. The documents are heavily scientific, but Major Murphy's analysis delivered these salient points. SARS-CoV-2 was created in the United States involving Eco Health Alliance. Ivermectin and HCQ were determined to be effective treatments in the early stages of the disease. DARPA itself determined the nature of the experimentation was so dangerous it fit the criteria for, quote, "no-go," quote, or, quote, "abort mission." Washoe County citizens have delivered similar scientific papers, articles, graphs, data sets, et cetera, to not only this governing body, but also to the Health District and the incompetent and unqualified Health Officer Kevin Dick. The actions taken by this body, the Health District, the School District, the Reno and Sparks City Councils are criminal. You cannot claim you did not know, not with the volume of information we have delivered to you for over 15 months. You are not woefully uninformed. You are willfully ignoring the information available in public sources, as well as that which we have repeatedly delivered to you. You have gleefully gathered around the government trough, slurping at the largesse delivered by the federal government under the guise of COVID-19 relief and the ARPA. You have laundered the money through county accounts and built a homeless shelter, which greatest claim to fame is a government hiring spree to populate it. This money is being printed by the Federal Reserve. It does not exist. It is amorphous. You have bankrupted Washoe County by encumbering our citizens' future under unrecoverable debt. You are guilty of financial malfeasance, and you are also guilty of crimes against humanity.
Kenji Otto. Kenji Otto.
Mr. Otto.
Happy New Year. And I have been out taking care of my 70-year-old mother-in-law, I'm sorry, 82-year-old mother-in-law and her 70-year-old roommate, trying to get them from ending up on the streets. I'd like to start out with the, my project of Crystal Canyon Boulevard in Cold Springs, Duane Smith and Mr. Fink came up here and made a statement to the commissioners of an untruth about how accurate their accident reports are. I'd like to make it put on a record that they gave me five accidents for five years, and I did the research, which they should have done, with Truckee Meadows Fire Department and the sheriffs, and found 33 accidents. Two, one or two of them, I'll just say one right at the moment, did have a death and was involved with a school bus that had seven children that were, had to be extradited. Now, my project is on the way. I asked for four-way stops on several streets. I didn't get that, but I, what I, what we got was $70,000 worth of improvements on the street. We haven't got it yet, but we have seen a four-way stop where I didn't, my, the people who signed the petition didn't ask for. I'm not angry with Mr. Smith. I am angry with Mr. Fink because of his attitude, and I am very happy with Mr. Brown, our district manager, who helped in this process. We got the, the four-way stop is there, but still waiting for everything else, and I'm being very patient, so is everybody else. With that said, now that that's on the record, is, there is a question and confusion. Last night, I was at the cab meeting, and people are very confused. I walked in here having to put a mask on and then taking the mask off. At the cab meeting, we had to have masks on. I understood that there was a resolution, I believe, and I apologize that I seem a little bit unprepared on that. But I thought the masks were gone, or if they aren't, then can we have some clarification? If they are, can we have some clarification? Are we wearing masks? Are we not wearing masks in public buildings? What's going on? The last thing that I have is, there was a comment made about January 6th and the Republicans, and I take offense to that. The only person that died in that riot was Ashley Babbitt, who was murdered by a officer of the law, who, and it's on video, and the Democrats are Marxists and are trying to take the country over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Otto.
I do have emails that were submitted, and there was one other person that signed in that somehow just left the system.
Mr. Foster, I had you sign in next. Bruce Foster. Correct, Mr. Foster, you were signed in this morning for public comment, correct? You were signed in for public comment this morning? Okay. I apologize, our system.
Yeah, no worries. This is my favorite picture here, of course.
Can we have the overhead, please? Go ahead. I'm sorry, I apologize, Mr. Foster. He started his time over, please.
Yeah, my favorite picture of our highest-paid public figure that has been in this position for over 40 years. Here we are, welcome. Goodbye, 2021, and hopefully not the Orwellian 1984. Here we are. The state of emergency was established by Governor Sisalak March 12, 2020, and then it was two weeks to flatten the curve. Here we are. But I wish to state, as Dr. Benjamin Rush, one of our founders, plainly stated, unless we put medical freedom into the Constitution, the time will come when medicine will organize into the underground dictatorship. To restrict the art of healing in one class of men and deny equal privileges to others will constitute the bastille of medical science. All such laws are un-American and despotic and have no place in a republic. The Constitution of this republic should make special privilege for medical freedom as well as medical freedom. In our world today, would not bastilles of our science be interpreted as fake science? Or to paraphrase virologist Dr. Judy Meckovich, propaganda masquerading as science, the new king of this now unholy marriage between government and corporations. James Madison wrote in the Federalist Papers that when legislative, judicial, and executive powers are accumulated into the same hands or in one person such as a king, it is a very definition of tyranny. These same hands, big medical, big media, big tech, big government, in collusion are suppressing anything other than drugs and experimental vaccines as a solution to good health, instead of taking about vitamin D, healthy diet, and other natural preventative measures. Big media continues to write, speak, and read teleprompter fiction. Big media continues to write, speak, and read teleprompter fiction that is cleverly crafted as news. These same hands have forced unconstitutional, unscientific, unproven mask-wearing, lockdowns, social distancing, testing, business closures in classic Orwellian style. These same hands have been ramping up fear with bogus case numbers. And then they are yet to be established in C-19 virus. Can you say so to my ear and her fear mongering from the bench? Hundred thousand children that are in hospitals and on ventilators.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Thank you, Mr. Foster. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I do have emails from Brian Urbus, from Ayolanda, from Chira Masialo, from E. Gersovich, from Tammy Holtstill, and that's it.
All right. Thank you, Madam. Quick, we'll place those emails on the record. All right, and that close, with that, signal for the public comment. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. We are on to item four. Madam Manager, this is Commissioners and County Managers announcements. Do you have any announcements to report this morning?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one announcement this morning. I wanted to notify the public that we've been informed that our Bartley Ranch testing location is closed today due to staffing, or I should say, lack of staffing. We do have other locations, three of them being run by North Shore Labs, which are open seven days a week from 8:00 to 3:30. We're asking that folks be patient. The demand is of course very high right now. Appointments are not necessary, but we do recommend that you pre-register to save time. And the test, to remind everyone, our antigen rapid test only. Results are available by the end of the day and appointments can still be made at the health district. So if you have an appointment and can't make it, we ask that you cancel so others can take your spot. And I'll just remind you that the other locations, other three locations that are open today are Eagle Canyon Park, South Valleys Regional Park, and North Valleys Regional Park. We've got information if you need it on the COVID-19 Washoe website. That's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Appreciate it. Vice Chairman, I have you send in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I had an opportunity to attend our first cab meeting of the, of the year. Lots of public comment, but there's a few things and I don't know whether the sheriff is listening, but I'm hopeful our staff, Mr. Solero and Mr. Smith, there are massive amounts of issues on the Pyramid Highway, not the least of which are U-turns and of course, high speed down through the center of Pyramid at night. So I don't know how we deal with this. I don't know how we work out a scenario with the sheriff's office to try to combat this or make some, ask NDOT to make some physical changes. We may have to bring back an item. I'm also asking that we bring back an item, Madam Manager, on, and the manager who was at our meeting. We had this conversation about a letter from the county commission with respect to the ASW removals, the Advanced Signal Warning System, removals on the Pyramid Highway and some other places. And those, those absolutely, the, the, the design is not flawed. It's actually, it's a very, it's a wonderfully efficient design. They want to remove them. I have said this on the record and I will say it again. It's a solution looking for a problem and so I'm hopeful that the commission will agree with me. And I would also like to have NDOT come and give us, they're going to give the cabs a presentation on ASW, but I'd like to have NDOT give us a presentation on ASW also. And that is all I have right now, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioner Hill, I have you send in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to announce the 36th Annual Interfaith MLK Memorial Service. It's January 16th at 5:00 PM at McKinley Arts and Culture Center. And I also wanted to just remind folks that on Tuesday, January 18th at 5:30, the West Truckee Meadows Verdi Township Cab will be meeting at the Verdi Community Library. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hill. I appreciate that. All right. I have a couple of comments I want to make for some clarity. During public comment, the Board of County Commissioners did at the last regular meeting in 2021 in December vote to end the public health emergency for Washoe County. That, for clarification, that did not change the mask mandate in regards to the governor's mandates. Those are still in place by the governor under his directives. Choosing to abide by those are your, those are your positions, however you see to abide by those. However, within the public county buildings, that mandate still is in place for our staff and for individuals visiting our, our building. Now, while in chambers, I have asked that, you know, the mandate does not apply. I don't feel the mandate works for me and I said that on the public record and I will continue to stick by that. However, if you choose to wear one here, we will not fault you for that. We will also not escort you out if you choose not to wear one. What we will ask you though is if you are disruptive to the meeting, we will ask you to leave. If you are disruptive to somebody sitting next to you, we will ask you to leave. Those are, those are just the simple things that we are trying to achieve here today. With that being said, I also want to, we had, we did experience quite a bit of snow during the Christmas holiday and New Year holiday was excessive. We had the largest snow record a month in, I mean, largest snow December record ever for the, for the region. And I want to publicly thank SNC, Sierra Nevada Construction, and also Granite Construction for coming and assisting with our snow operations. We were significantly challenged during that in a lot of our foothill areas in the unincorporated area and also in Washoe Valley where roads were impacted. And with meetings with NDOT and a number of individuals, NDOT is facing about a 50% personnel decrease for a number of their snow removal operations. And what a lot of individuals don't know is that we do have a number of different agencies that maintain our communal roads here within the Reno-Sparcs area, one of which being McCarran Boulevard, which is owned and operated by the state, the government. I mean, for the state by NDOT. And then roads such as Holcomb Ranch and Huffacre and Pyramid are all maintained by NDOT. So when certain storms of that significance and those calibers happen within our region, NDOT, due to its current staffing situation, has to pull employees off of sometimes mountain summits that aren't as priority to bring them down to prioritize within roads where there are going to be more public traveling. So it takes a little bit more time. For those of you who saw that 431 was closed for a period of days and also even Washoe Valley, I-580 out through the valley was closed due to high winds and snowdrifts. Those are the challenges, but I want to thank Sierra Nevada Construction and Granite Construction for stepping up to help clear some of our arterial roads in our foothills and help with our fire department in clearing out our fire hydrants, make sure that we can maintain public safety because that is number one, is to make sure we can have access to get access to your home, get REMZA there if need be or our fire engines there if need be. So we do appreciate that. Secondly, NDOT, did speak with NDOT as well in regards to Mount Rose Highway. Had a number of discussions about a corridor study for my residence in District 2. There are improvements that are coming to Mount Rose in the next few years and we are in discussions about what those improvements will be, whether it's signalized intersections or dividers down for safety, but that corridor study is just now finally completed. And that is, that's it for me. I have nothing else to add to that. So Commissioner John, do you have anything final?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do. As you know, our boundary lines have changed and the Sun Valley Saturday Morning Cab is coming back to you. In February, we plan to have our very first Sun Valley Cab. On some Saturday in February, it's all contingent on getting our board appointees so that we can actually have a quorum. And so I've been working on that. And the other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is my senior service, or your senior services advisory board, of which I serve as a liaison to, have been successful in lobbying the RTC on several bus routes that were proposed to be eliminated or changed because they identified that these are heavily used by senior citizens and depended upon by senior citizens to do their basic essential tasks throughout the valley. So I wanted to give them a congrats. They had RTC come to their last meeting last week and present and had some really good data to counter. I know that RTC is experiencing what all of our agencies are in terms of staffing. It's very difficult, being so resource-constrained, to then at the same time pivot and make sure everybody's voice is heard to the best that we can do. And I, I want to just thank the RTC and most importantly, the, this board for empowering the senior citizens advisory board to be active at that level and to advocate for the stuff that really they know better than we do, even though I go to those meetings every month. Senior activists have, I mean, they're on it. That's, that is probably one of the best groups of our advisory boards that I serve on and have served on because they are so involved and deeply focused on problem solving. So I wanted to let you know that. I know I have two of you, the chair and the vice chair, serve on the RTC. So just to let you know here publicly what's kind of going on and any help you can give or especially we're always, and this commissioner is always open for the explanations and the reality of what we're living in. But it looks like they got some for what they asked for and all I can say is thank you so much. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner John. A couple of other things I wanted to point out too. One, one thing that I thought was really something we talked about at our last fire board meeting, but I felt it prudent to bring up. And Commissioner comments here, another thing that we've talked and we had a gentleman speak to wildfire and in the challenges that we've experienced with wildfire here in Northern Nevada is, is long in our history. But over the, also over the Christmas holiday, right prior to New Year's, in Boulder County, Colorado, they experienced the Marshall Fire, which devastated 1,000 homes. So based upon that and the action of our fire board, we instructed our chief to participate in a Northern Nevada Fire Chiefs Association meeting where a number of chiefs met together to discuss plans about how we can actively work together, not with, not from a standpoint of just a wildland interface to an urban interface, but more of a collective plan when we have issues such as high winds, when we have issues such as dry conditions and how we can continue to be better prepared, whether that's fuels management, whatever we can do along our, in our community to present, I mean, prevent some of these types of horrible incidents from happening as much as we possibly can in the future. Chiefs such as Smith, the Smith Valley Fire Chief, Chief Lovebird, Chief Harvey from Central Lion County, Chief Nikolai from North Lion. You had Chief Salmon from Carson City, Chief Lindgren from Tahoe Douglas, Chief Carlini from East Lake, you had Chief Lonecar from Story County, Chief Pelt from Pyramid Lake Fire, you had Chief Moore from Truckee Meadows, Chief Reed from City of Sparks, Chief Cochrane from the City of Reno, Chief Summers from North Lake Tahoe, and then you had Chief Fogerson. He was the chief of emergency management for the state. And then you also have Mr., Mrs. Jamie Rice-Gomes, manager of Living with Fire from Cooperative Extension, Mr. James, Mr. John Palma, Fire Management Officer for BLM Carson District, Ms. Casey Casey, she's the State Forester, Fire Warden for the Nevada Division of Forestry. And then you have Matt Zoomstein, District Ranger from Carson Ranger District from Humboldt-Tiobe National Forest. And then also Mr. William T. Sandy Muns, who is the wildfire training coordinator at the Truckee Meadows Community College. So some, hopefully some productive movement out of that. And lastly, I almost forgot and I want to make, this is something, you know, near and dear to my heart and that we've worked at continuously, but Ms. Howell and Human Services Agency has worked tirelessly to develop relationships in our community to continue to advocate for women and children that are underserved and in challenging situations. And she has diligently gone out and sought to work with different groups to find funding for those types of programs. And I want to thank, over the holiday, Grace Church invited her to participate in one of their services. And Grace Church has been a tremendous, tremendous partner with the county. And they invited her and surprised her with a $700,000 check for human services to go directly to women and children and their continued, human services, continued efforts on working towards bringing some of those individuals, the services and need, and these things that they need moving forward. So a big, you know, big round of applause and thank you, a heartfelt thank you to Grace Church and that entire community. They have done leaps and bounds working for the women and children of Washoe Valley, I mean, Washoe County. And so it's tremendous. So thank you very much and to Amber Howell and her team for continuing to work with them. So those are my final comments. I have nothing further. Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Grace Church, what can we say? I mean, they have, they have just, they have been so involved in the community on so many fronts and, and they have really, genuinely, and I will say this with all sincerity, put their money where their mouth is. Not just, not just talk, but actually said, you know, look, here's, here's some money to fix these issues. That, that reminded me, Mr. Chairman, of, Ms. Howell sent me an email, Madam Manager, with respect to Daybreak. And I'm hopeful that we'll have a, in fact, I'm going to ask for an agenda item in the not-too-distant future on Daybreak. For those of you who don't know what Daybreak is, it's for those families who are dealing with Parkinson's disease and Alzheimer's, both. And because it kind of crosses, it becomes a very difficult scenario, but it's predominantly Alzheimer's. We were looking at trying to combine forces with Nevada Senior Services and they've done a phenomenal job in Southern Nevada, serving a lot of people on a, on a very limited budget. And so I'm hopeful that we can have a similar program. I have been hopeful, literally since I got elected, I've been trying to work on this and it's, it's been an issue. If you have a family member that has Alzheimer's, you know how difficult it is to work through the issues of just day-to-day life, of going to the grocery store, of doing just simple, what we would consider quotidian things to just, to just live our lives because it's, it's just very, very difficult. Daybreak gives these folks an opportunity to have high-quality care and they would know that they're in a place that they can afford. And so I'm looking forward to seeing what Ms. Howell has for us and, and the plan that we will establish moving forward to make that a more robust program. And then one other thing, and I was remiss in this. So I see Mr. Smith sitting in the back of the room. Mr. Smith, you know, a couple of things that I'm, I'm interested in. I thought, and I know we put some money aside at RTC to do things like four-way stops on places like Crystal Canyon and I thought we had that solved. So I would like to meet with you, potentially even after the meeting today. I want to hear what we're doing there. I want to hear how we're mitigating some of those speeds. I know Crystal Canyon has, has got some very high speeds. The constituent said that they were able to find 33 accidents and I'm not surprised with that number because I know some of the numbers out in Spanish Springs. We had a side street that had, in a residential area, side street that had seven accidents on its own. And you shouldn't see that in residential areas. It should be a lot safer where people are slowing down and dealing with the traffic. And then the other thing I want to talk about and I want to try to understand is, what's our maintenance schedule on the ditches, not just in Lemon Valley, but all over the county? I want to, I want to understand that. I want to, I want to know and whose responsibility is it? And where are they on the maintenance schedule? And are we doing enough? And maybe I'm wrong. Maybe what we need to be doing is stopping the weeds from growing to begin with so that, that we're not having an issue with having to clear weeds from the ditches altogether. And then I know the constituent doesn't like to hear this, but we've had one in Spanish Springs forever. I believe we need a regional, regional storm water utility that deals with all the regions, not just, and we have one in North Spanish Springs. People in the City of Sparks already pay for storm water. It's on their, it's on their sewer bills. That's all through the City of Sparks. That has nothing to do with Washoe County. That's, that's their, that's their deal. Has nothing to do with the Truckee River Flood Management Authority's. Has nothing to do with the Truckee River Flood Management Authority's project, which is a, it's basically a creature of statute. So it's a very different scenario. But I know the City of Reno is working on an overall plan, and I think we need to do this. We already commissioned a study at WRWC to understand the conveyance channels of stormwater throughout the region. And then once we understood, and our plan was, once we understood the conveyance channels, then we could look at those channels for volumetric flow and try to understand which ones could potentially be dealt with in a different way. So I'm interested in understanding how we are approaching this. I'm a short timer. I've got three years left. And I know a constituent said, you know, talked about 2024. I will not be running for any office. None, zero. Applaud with my wife. I will not be running for any office because I'm ready to retire. I encourage any of you to step up and run for office. Step up. Think it's easy? I encourage it. Please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All right. Seeing no further comments from any of the commissioners, we will close item four and move on to item five.
Mr. Chair, item number five is the election of the Chair of the Washoe County Board of Commissioners. This is an action item.
All right. Mr. Edwards, would you please walk us through the NRS in regards to election of chair, sir?
Yes. The commission is free to vote today on one of the members of the BCC to serve as the commission chair. It's up to you to set a term on that, and that's the discretion of the board. So that's it for today.
All right. Thank you, sir. So, and that falls under NRS. Please, can you outline that number again? It's 248? 245?
If you give me one second, you can move on, and then I'll flag you. I have the statutory number for you.
Thank you very much. So while Mr. Edwards is pulling the statutory number for the election of chair and setting the term for that, this board did elect in our governance, governing documents to have the chair and vice chair serve in 24-month capacities through a legislative session and an election cycle. And to do that, we have elected to do the chair, voting of chairs on the off-year before an election, prior and then after, obviously after a legislative cycle. So with that being said, we can, as a board, change that, but right now the current set time is for a 24-month service of the Chair of the Washoe County Board of Commissioners. We will take public comment first because this is an action item and the four commissioners in attendance today will be voting on that chair position. So with that, Madam Clerk, can we please, oh, is there any public comments signed in on this?
I do not have anybody signed in, but I believe our district attorney is.
All right, Mr. Nate Edwards.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. That's NRS 244.070 is the statutory reference.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Thank you for putting that on the record. All right. With that, is there any discussion on the election of chair? It's been my pleasure to serve as the chair for this body for the last 24 months. It is a title, but it is more than a title, it's a responsibility. And as a responsibility, that has a number of challenges that have come along with this. This responsibility is to work with this entire board and help set the agenda and represent the board to the best of its ability. However, the election of chair does not change the voting structure. Every commissioner is still one vote of a five-member board and is really the individual best suited to lead this board and lead this organization and work with our management and executive staff to move forward. So it has been my honor and pleasure to serve as the last 24 months. It's been a very challenging 24 months for a number of reasons, but it has been an honor and I've enjoyed it. So thank you very much for the support of my board to allow me to continue to do that. But it is with great honor today to turn that over to the next chair. So is there any discussion by any of the other commissioners? Commissioner Hill, Commissioner Jung?
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Hill.
Commissioner Hill, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for your service. I've learned a lot from you this, my first year, my first part of being a commissioner. And I would like to nominate Von Hartung to be our chair today. I think that he will do a great job leading us into this next year.
Okay.
Perfect. I have a motion for Commissioner Hartung to become chair, a second from Commissioner Jung. I see no further public comment. I want to wish you well, sir, in that. So I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. Please affirm the vote on the screen. All right. And Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I'll finish the last item for you. We'll move on to item six, which is the election of vice chair. Madam Manager.
Yes, Mr. Soon-to-be past chair.
Commissioner Lucy?
This is the election of your vice chair for the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners. This is an action item.
All right. And Mr. Edwards, this falls under the same NRS, correct?
It does, Mr. Chair.
In the setting of the terms. And for clarification, I want to go back to, really quickly to five before moving forward. Commissioner Hill, it was your, I'm assuming under our guidance, it was your intent for the term of chair to be set at 24 months. Is that correct?
Yes, I misspoke. So 24 months, two years.
Yes. Okay. So that was the intent of your motion for Commissioner Hartung to serve as chair for the 24 months. Would you like another motion on that, Mr. Edwards? Or we did discuss that prior to, and that was intended under our guiding documents.
Yeah, I think you brought it up that two years is the established period already, and the motion was simply to elect Commissioner Hartung. So I think that's covered.
All right. Thank you, sir. Just want to make sure. And so the vice chair would be identical. That term would be set for 24 months under the guidance of the NRS. As the vice chair, it is the vice chair's responsibility to continue to serve as the second-in-command for the chairmanship and to run the chair position in the absence of the chair. And so it would be my honor to elect, or I would make a motion to make, elect Commissioner Hill.
Nominate.
Nominate, thank you. That was what I was looking for. Nominate Commissioner Hill for the vice chair position of Washoe County Board of Commissioners.
I will second that.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Do I have any public comment or discussion on this, Madam Clerk?
I have nobody signed in.
All right. All right. Is there any further public comment from Commissioner Jung, Commissioner Hill? Seeing none? All right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. Please affirm your votes on the screen. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, before we move on to the next item, we are going to recess for five minutes to make some adjustments for technical reasons so that the chair can realign. Thank you. We'll be in recess for five minutes. We'll be back at 11:05.
Okay, are we ready to get back to work? Okay, I will call us back to order. And, Madam Manager, that takes us now to item number seven.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number seven is a recommendation for discussion and possible action in regards to the appointment and/or reappointment of commissioners to boards and commissions, alteration of terms of service on boards and commissions where legally permissible, and other such action as the Board of Commissioners may desire to take in regards to those administrative matters. This item includes any board or commissions listed at the end of this agenda after the item denoted adjournment. I'm gonna turn it over to Nancy Lewenhagen to introduce this item. She's the county's communications director. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners. Good morning, actually. It's not afternoon, yeah. Getting close. For the record, Nancy Lewenhagen, Communications Director for Washoe County. As directed by you, the Communications Division now has the Commission Support Program. And this, and this, our staff from Commission Support Program has been working with Jamie Rodriguez, our Governance Affairs Manager, on this item. And we will now be taking over this process for you. And, to talk about your appointments and reappointments on commissions and boards. And with that, I'll bring up Alex Wilson, who will be walking you through this process.
Good morning, Board Members. My name is Alexandra Wilson for the record, as part of the Commission Support Program. So, in previous years, how this has been run is I will read through the vacancies or reappointments necessary to be put on the record, and of course, to make any necessary changes as appropriate. So, in front of you, you should have an outline of the boards and committees that you appoint to, or, I'm sorry, not appoint to, sit on. And with that, we'll kick off the first one that we need to address. So, we have the Community Homelessness Advisory Board, that Lucy is up for potential reappointment. This term can be set at the time of appointment, so currently it's at a two-year term, but it can be altered. The next one is the Nevada Association of Counties Board of Directors, NACO, which Hartung is up for a potential reappointment, for a one-year term. The next one that we have is the Regional Transportation Commission, in which Lucy is up for potential reappointment. This was brought up at previous BCC discussion by Commissioner Hartung for the need of alternates. And I did check in with RTC, who noted that you can have alternates for all the board members. However, it is advised to have one or two, so that they know who to reach out for in case of a need for a quorum. The next board is the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency Governing Board, in which Hill is up for potential reappointment, for a three-year term. The next one is the Truckee River Flood Management Authority, in which both Hartung and Commissioner Hill are up for reappointment for a potential two-year term, as well as the Vaya Conservation District for Commissioner Herman and her alternate, Diane Stobeki, for a two-year term. The next one is the Washoe County Criminal Justice Advisory Board, for Commissioner Lucy, potential reappointment, for a one-year term. We also have the Washoe County Debt Management Commission, for Commissioner Herman, potential reappointment, for a two-year term. Washoe County Internal Audit Committee, for Commissioner Herman and Hill as an alternate, for a one-year term. I did wanna know, for the Washoe County Investment Committee, at the previous BCC, I know there was some discussion on offloading that from Commissioner Lucy, but at the time was unable to, as he was the chair. So, that's something that we can bring back if that changes, that change is needed. The next is the Washoe County Senior Services Advisory Board Liaison, which Commissioner Jung is up for a reappointment, potentially for a four-year term. We also have the Washoe County School District Oversight Panel, in which both Commissioner Lucy and Commissioner Herman are up for potential reappointment, for a two-year term. And lastly, we have the Washoe County Story, or, sorry, Washoe Story Conservation District, in which there is a vacancy under Commissioner Herman.
Okay. Mr. Edwards, give me some, give me some guide rails here. Do we have to go through each one of these things individually, or can we just make sort of a, a, I mean, there are certain things that we won't be able to do this on, with respect to the Washoe County Investment Committee. Commissioner Lucy being the chair, and I, and I don't know, it must be written somewhere in our, in our guidelines, that the chair is one of the primary members, because I remember last time I was chair, I was one of the primary members also. So, I, I think that one has to be dealt with. But, but with respect to the, the rest of the boards and commissions, other than the Washoe County Story, the Washoe Story Conservation, which, it sounds like there's, there's just, I don't, I don't quite understand that, but we can get to that in just a second. And, and so, I don't know why, do we need it, Commissioner Herman is an alternate, or a primary, and there is no alternate?
Historically, just similar to the Tahoe Boards, that has been under Commissioner Herman, with a vacancy. Previous, it was a, a resident.
Okay.
But that resident has since retired, and then, I believe, did not wish to continue on the board.
Right.
I can check back on that, but the vacancy has previously been a resident, and not necessarily on the board.
Okay. Okay, all right. So, and, and then, and then, of course, RTC alternates. I don't know why, Commissioner Lucy, we did not do that. I don't, I don't know, but, but I know the City Council has done it this way, where they just make all of their members alternates on those kinds of boards, which is what my preference would be, because then that way, I mean, we can, and, and is it possible, Mr. Edwards, and, and are there any guidelines to this? I think we can probably do whatever we want. Can we list, let's say, let's say we list, you know, Commissioner Hill is one, Commissioner Jung is two, and Commissioner Herman as three, just based on districts? Because, you know, do it that way. Is that, is that possible? Can we just list them that way, as, as, you know, in that order?
Yeah, so, I think there's a couple of questions that, that you've put on the table right now. One of them is kind of, you know, how do you handle this item overall? Procedurally, what's the best way to do it? And then the other is, with respect to some of these individual appointments that you're talking about, like the alternates for RTC. So, my recommendation would be that if the desire is to sort of continue the current status of the membership on most of those boards, that, that a motion be made as to those boards that were mentioned in the presentation this morning. And then, any that you have, any specific treatment that you want to delve into, you say are accepted from that motion, and then do each of those individually. So, the RTC alternates, for example.
Or reverse of that. We can do it first.
Yes, you could do, you could do either order. It doesn't, it doesn't matter.
So, let's, okay.
So, and then your other question was, you know, is that the way to handle, or can you handle it that way, with respect to alternates for RTC? And the, the answer to that is, I think yes. I think you can do it the way that you're contemplating. You know, if RTC council or staff had some kind of issue with that, first of all, it was, I believe this was raised with them, about the idea of appointing alternates. Go ahead.
Correct, that was correct. I did check in with their staff, and they said that alternates are allowed. It can be all commissioners. It is just preferred to do one or the other, as they run into the issue of not being able to contact all of them, so it's just the responsibility. But all, all individuals, or, sorry, all board members can be alternates.
Okay, right. And we can just put them, and I'm, and I, I'll use the term lightly, in a preferential order of, of, you know, here's your call, here's your call order.
Yeah, and, and I think that sounds pretty workable, and deals with the concern that their staff had raised, so.
Right.
So, yeah, I think you have some latitude about how you wanna do that, and those are some options procedurally.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Lucy.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I would go, if, as we've done before, and on other boards, one that you serve as chair, which is Truckee Meadows Water Authority and Truckee River Flood Management Authority, if we create RTC under that same premise, that all commissioners serve as either primaries or alternates, I would recommend that that be our solution, as you, you've kind of broadcast. I would take this individually, in the sense that it is my understanding, and I have, in, in discussions, I have not heard of any massive changes from any types of boards. I am not, I don't need any changes. I'd like to remain on all my boards that I currently serve on, and be re-upped for the boards that I do serve on, at the will of this board. That'd be my preference, and, you know, maybe we just go that way and fix, if we can fix those other two.
Right, right. That's exactly what I'm thinking. So, let me, Mr. Edwards, let me ask you this, and I don't know where this resides. Does the chair have to be on investment?
Yes.
They do? Okay, all right.
And you would serve as chair.
I was trying to get out of that.
The secondary member, the secondary member does not, the chair has to serve.
Okay.
But the secondary member can be any one of the commissioners.
Okay, so, let's, let's deal with, let's deal with investment and RTC alternates to begin with. And I feel the same. I don't, I don't, I don't feel like I need a change on any of my boards. I'm comfortable. There's a bunch of things I'm still working on. So, let's, I'll, let's, let's start out with RTC alternates.
All right. Mr. Chair, if I may.
Mr. Lucy.
Mr. Chair, I would make a recommendation that, for the Regional Transportation Commission, and this is in the form of a motion, that we re-up myself, and continue to have you serve on RTC as the two primary members, and make Commissioner Vice Chair Hill, Commissioner Jung, and Commissioner Herman serve as alternates to that board.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Mr. Edwards, I, I think it's probably, instead of doing each one of these, and, and let's, let's take, before we do this, let's, let's take public comment.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed in for public comment on this item?
I have nobody signed in on seven.
Okay, I will close public comment, and bring it back to the board. So, I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, so that makes all the, all the commissioners alternates, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Is there, is there any order, though?
No.
Okay, okay. All right, we'll let them.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm probably not in the business of making other agency staff easier for them to get ahold of board members to vote on their policy.
Okay.
But that, I'm not gonna solve that problem up here at the board, especially with the amount of technology we have. I, I think that's, for one of the richest agencies in all of Nevada to be asking for that, that really bothers me. And can we move on, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Let's go to investment.
All right. Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I would make the motion that, for the Washoe County Investment Committee, that Commissioner, Vice Chair, Chairman Hartung and Vice Chair Hill are the two primaries for that board.
Second. So, we have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, I think that, does, does, so now, now we just, now we just need a motion for all of the other boards and commissions, as almost a block vote, to maintain consistency. Am I correct in that, Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Lucy.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that, as, for all other boards listed on the index, we maintain the certain, the current membership, and move forward until next year.
Okay, I have a motion, I'll second that. Is there any other discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Do you need anything else from us?
No, I think I have everything I need. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. Okay, that takes us, Madam Manager, to item eight, our consent agenda. Would you take us into that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Your consent items are fifteen today, items eight A1 through eight I1.
Okay. So, I, I would, I would like to acknowledge and give them an opportunity of a moment, and it's, it's outside of public comment, because they are the ones who are getting this particular donation. The administration from Awaken is here, and, and it just so happens, and, and I'm gonna let you guys talk about this, I'm gonna let you all come up and have a, and, and just tell us about what's going on here. Today is National Human Trafficking Awareness Day. So, it is, it is serendipitous that this is happening on this particular day. Thank you so much. Please introduce yourselves, and, and just tell us a bit about what you're doing, and hopefully, the commissioners will approve this, this funding.
Wonderful. Thank you. My name is Jen Robinson, and I'm one of the co-founders, and I run the Program for Our Teens in our community that have been trafficked and exploited. I have Amy and Jessica with me, and on behalf of Awaken, we wanna say thank you so much for your generosity, for your heart and your investment into this cause that impacts so many men, women, and children in our community. Today is National Human Trafficking Awareness Day, and it's incredible to, one, receive the support on this day, but to carry it out all through the year. Awaken has been around for ten years, and we have a drop-in center that's just a few blocks away. It's open five days a week, completely survivor-run. So, when women and girls come up into our drop-in, they're met with faces and women who have been where they've been. That can speak life and truth into them. We have an education center for our teens that have been trafficked. We have, like, just numerous direct services for the women and children who have been affected. We have mentors, we have tutors, we have workforce development, we have education assistance. Anything that a woman or a child may need to reclaim their life, to get back on their feet, we wanna be able to provide for them. And so, your support today directly helps the women and children that have been affected right here in northern Nevada, and so we cannot say thank you enough.
Thank you so much. And, you know, and I'll, I'll just add, and I'm gonna add myself into this. I think many of us live in a bubble when it comes to human trafficking. We don't think it exists in twenty, you know, twenty-two. We don't, it's, 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 you know, sort of out of sight, out of mind, but it is, it is here. We have called northern Nevada, we have called, you know, Washoe County a hub, and my understanding is, is that it can also be a hub for trafficking, and, and many travel through here. And, and so, what I'd also like to add at this time, Madam Manager, would staff reach out to Awaken, and, and perhaps in February sometime, I'd like them to come back and tell us about the good work that they're doing, and, and, you know, some of the things that they've accomplished. I would really like to, to have more time, and maybe you can, and you tell us what the timeframe would be. Maybe you can prepare a small presentation, so that we can really understand the, the depth and, and the, the, how embedded trafficking really is in a, in a world that most of us are just not familiar with.
Absolutely. Last year alone, we worked with over a hundred and seventy women and children affected. And so, to be able to educate you guys as well, and the community to look for red flags and signs.
Yes.
To actually be able to help as well.
I'm, I'm excited. Okay, all right. Well, thank you so much. We're gonna go back to the agenda item, and I, I appreciate it. We will, we will absolutely be in touch.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. So, I'd, I'd also like to acknowledge item eight G3, Special District Funds, from Commissioner Jung, for Truckee Meadows tomorrow. Thank you so much, Commissioner Jung, for that. And if there's nothing else on this item, if, if, Commissioners, do you have anything before I take a, a motion? Mr. Lucy.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to point out also, not only your donation from your special district funds for Awaken, which is a wonderful cause, but your donation also to, of ten thousand dollars to Soffel Seeds, which have been very, very influential in regards to our, our place in creating a community garden for those individuals, and, and trying to create an environment for individuals to participate in community gardening, I think is wonderful. And also, you are giving ten thousand dollars out of your district funds to Spanish Springs Library, which we've always said here at the commission, that the libraries are truly not just libraries and homes for books, but a true public center, and that creates allowance for public involvement and, and part of the civic process. So, we wanna also acknowledge your generous contributions to those two, as well as Awaken. So, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, anything else? Okay, I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda as.
Move to approve as posted, sir.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so, motion and a second. Is there any public comment on consent, once again? Okay, I will close public comment, bring it back to the board. We have a, I'm sorry?
I just heard somebody in the audience say that they had signed in, so.
Mr. Saint John, come down. We'll, we'll figure it out later. This is item number eight, consent. Welcome.
Thank you for the record, Nicole Saint John. I was looking at the consent items, and something stood out to me that is a little troubling, and that is that a lot of the things that you just voted, kinda to give your blessing to, were on a lot of items that were actually in effect, starting in July first, and so we are six months into approving those items and the payment for those items. And I wondered what the board can do to try to get ahead of this, instead of doing this so much retroactively. Many of those items were all retroactive, and I think that's not a great way to run businesses. If I, you know, I run a business, and we can't do those retroactively. I think the board needs to step up and make sure that they don't get behind on this. I don't understand any reason why they couldn't be addressing these issues before they become retroactive.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Is there anyone else signed in?
I have nobody signed in.
Okay. And, and Mr. Saint, and do we have Mr. Saint John's card?
It's all right, Rick.
Okay, all right. I just, I wanna make sure that you have everything that you need. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We've taken public comment. Getting lots of reverb. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. That takes us now to item number nine. Commissioner Lucy, do you have a block vote in mind?
I do, sir. If I, if I may, it would be my recommendation this morning, that in block, if we could take in block, and this is in the form of a motion, that we will take items nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, all in block today.
Okay. All right. So, I have a motion for purposes of getting them read. I will second it. Madam Manager, will you take us through the block vote, please?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bear with me while I read these fifteen items into the record. Item number nine is a recommendation to approve Amendment Number One to Agreement for Professional Consulting Services between SB Engineering and Washoe County for additional engineering design services for the Phase Two Veterans Parkway to Hidden Valley Regional Park effluent Expansion Project, in the additional amount of two hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars, for a total contract amount of four hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars. The additional professional services include the design for new irrigation services, onsite irrigation pumps, structural retaining walls along the necessary electrical, geotechnical, and structural engineering services. Item number ten is a recommendation to award a bid and approve the agreement to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder to upgrade the fire alarm panel at the Jan Evans Juvenile Justice Center, located at six fifty Ferrari McLeod Reno, Nevada, PWP-WA-2022-59, and staff is recommending Nelson Electric Company in the amount of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. The project consists of replacing the outdated fire alarm control system and installing an emergency employee notification system. Item number eleven is a recommendation to award a bid and approve the agreement to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder for the public and visiting administration remodel project, Phase Two, at the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, located at nine eleven Par Boulevard in Reno, Nevada, PWP-WA-2022-100. Staff is recommending Raymond Brothers Construction, Inc., in the amount of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Staff is recommending Raymond Brothers Construction, Inc. in the amount of $467,102.96. This project will be funded through the United States Department of Justice, the State of Nevada Department of Public Safety, and an Office of Criminal Justice Administration grant, which was accepted on April 13th, 2021. Phase Two will renovate staff areas, creating safe transaction zones to reduce the exposure of Code 19 to the regional detention facility and other areas of the sheriff's office. Item number 15, or sorry, number 12, is a recommendation to accept a subaward Amendment Number Two to the Family First Prevention Services Act Transition Sub Award from the Nevada Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Child and Family Services, DCFS, that increases the award amount to $638,303.51 with no county match. It extends the grant period to September 30th, 2022, and authorizes the Director of the Human Services Agency to retroactively execute the grant award and directs the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget amendments. Item number 13 is a recommendation to approve an agreement with the Board of Regents Nevada System of Higher Education on behalf of University of Nevada Reno Early Head Start to provide a home parenting service that fills a critical role in the implementation of Parents as Teachers, or the PAT model, to Washoe County Human Services Agency Families, which is retroactive from September 30th, 2021 through September 30th, 2022, with the provision of two one-year renewals in a total amount not to exceed $1,088,829. And that's fiscal year, for fiscal year '22, that's $154,039. Fiscal year '23 is $353,875. And fiscal year '24 is $580,915. If approved, it authorizes the purchasing and contracts manager to execute the agreement. Item number 14 is a recommendation to accept a federal Title IV E subgrant award from the State of Nevada Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Child and Family Services, in the amount of $20,446,299, of which $9,442, sorry, $9,442,687 is the county match. This is for Washoe County Child Welfare Services, retroactive July 1, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. It authorizes the Director of the Human Services Agency to execute the resolution for subgrant award related to documents, and authorizes a subgrant agreement between Washoe County and the Washoe County School District to pass through the Title IV E federal funds to reimburse for the actual expenses incurred to provide the out-of-zone transportation for children in foster care, which is allowed under the Title IV E of the Social Security Act, which is estimated to be an annual cost of $450,000 for a retroactive period from July 1, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. It also directs the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget amendments and authorizes the purchasing and contracts manager to sign the agreement between Washoe County and the Washoe County School District and approve the resolution necessary for the same. Item number 15 is a recommendation to accept two senior nutrition subgrant awards from the State of Nevada Aging and Disability Services Division for the following Older Americans Title Act Title III programs. One, Congregate Meals, which is $449,018.90, which $67,353 is a county match, and that's retroactively from October 1st, 2021 to September 30th, 2022. And two, Home Delivered Meals, which is $1,366,911.83, of which $205,037 is a county match. That's retroactive from October 1, 2021 to September 30th, 2022. It authorizes the Director of the Human Services Agency to execute the grant award documents, and it directs the Comptroller to make the necessary budget amendments. Item 16 is a recommendation to approve a contract with Allied Universal Security for armed and unarmed professional security services, retroactive to October 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021. This is an estimated expenditure that's anticipated at $809,229. If approved, it authorizes the purchasing and contracts manager to execute the agreement. Item number 17 is a recommendation to, one, approve the attached resolution to augment the Marijuana Establishment's 3% Fee Fund in the amount of $152,894 to increase the expenditure and transfer authority to the Department of Alternative Sentencing for fiscal year 2022 in accordance with the Nevada Revised Statutes, NRS 354.598005. And two, create one new full-time Department of Alternative Sentencing Case Manager position, pay grade J, as reviewed and evaluated by the Job Evaluation Committee. And three, authorize the human resources to make the necessary changes. Four, direct the Comptroller to make the appropriate budget amendments. The fiscal year impact for 2022 on that item is $152,894, which is a net fiscal impact of $0. Number 18 is a recommendation to approve a resolution endorsing the Vintage at Spanish Springs Development at Zero Neighborhood Way in Spanish Springs, Nevada, 89411, a senior restricted development that's available to residents aged 55 and above, consisting of 257 affordable units, restricted to households at or below 60% of area median income, and to authorize the Chair to sign the resolution. If approved, this resolution is made in accordance with NAC 319-7115 subset 2B, and only for the purposes of the applicant's use and their funding request from the State of Nevada Housing Division. APN is 532-031-10 and 532-031-15. The applicant is Vintage Housing Development, Inc., and the project property owner is Vintage at Spanish Springs LP. Item number 19 is a recommendation to retroactively approve the lease terms between Washoe County and the Housing Authority of the City of Reno for the county to occupy 2.012 acres within the property located at 1775 East 4th Street, Reno, Nevada, 89512, for a six-month term, which is December 8th, 2021 through June 8th, 2022, to provide the Nevada Cares Campus temporary overflow shelter capacity for people experiencing homelessness and construction staging space. Two, if approved, authorize the county manager Eric Brown to execute the lease and authorize the county manager Eric Brown to execute all necessary agreements, warrants, and checks for the effectuation of the same. Three, to approve the use of Fund 223-4, Cost Center 223420, in the amount of $1 needed to support the fiscal year 2022 lease costs. Excuse me, one second. Item number 20 is a recommendation in accordance with NRS 244.1505 to approve subgrants of American Rescue Plan Act funds through the Corona State Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund and Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund to the Children's Cabinet in amount of $100,000 for the Signs of Suicide Prevention Program, with a retroactive period from July 1, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, and to the Great Reno Balloon Race in the amount of $100,000 for the 2022 event, with a period from January 11, 2022 through December 31st, 2022. And approve the, the resolutions necessary for the same, direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary net zero cross-functional budget appropriation transfers. And generally speaking, American Rescue Plan Act funds are federal funds that have been distributed to state and local entities around the country to address the negative impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic since 2020. Item number 21 is a recommendation to approve an amended allocation of American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds through the Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund and Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund in a total amount of $7,971,644 for the Cares Campus Facilities Operations Fiscal Year 2022 project. That includes $1,861,112 that was allocated and approved by the Board on December 14th, 2021. That's with a period from January 11, 2022 through December 31st, 2023. The performance period includes additional months to allow for the hiring process. It directs the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary net zero cross-functional budget appropriation transfers, and authorizes the creation of 28 new full-time positions funded 100% by these SLRF grants for up to 18 months. And as such, when the grant funding is eliminated, the position hours will be reduced and/or positions will be abolished accordingly unless additional funding is secured. It directs the Human Resources Department to make the necessary staffing adjustments as evaluated by the Job Evaluation Committee. And if approved, this will result in an additional allocation of $6,110,532 in ARPA funds on top of the already-approved $1,861,112, which was allocated by the BCC Board of County Commissioners on December 14th, 2021, in order to fund additional staff positions to support homeless shelter operations. Item number 2022, item number 22, is a recommendation to approve the Axon Bundled Contract under sole source purchasing exemption for the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, and enter into a new contract with Axon Enterprise, Inc. for a 60-month term at a cost not to exceed $1,350,000 annually, or $6,750,000 for the full 60 months. This supports body worn cameras, fleet car cameras, less lethal or tasers, and other support services offered by Axon Enterprises, Inc. And finally, item number 23 is a recommendation to approve a net zero cross-fund appropriation transfer from the Washoe County Capital Improvement Fund to the Enhanced 911 Fund in the amount of $1 million, and direct the Comptroller to make the appropriate budget amendments, which the net impact to the county budget is zero.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Manager. Commissioners, before I open public comment, are there any questions or comments on any of the items in the block vote? Okay. Madam Manager, I will just say, item 21, I want to see results. You know, we're spending money like kids in a candy store here, and I want to see some results. There has to be some forward motion, so I'm, I'm, I'm waiting. I'll just leave it at that. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment? I can't see any one.
Yes, we do.
So, go ahead.
On item 16, we have Nicholas Saint John.
Mr. Saint John. Welcome back.
Nicholas Saint John, again, for the record. As I was looking at the budget for this, or the item 16, again, it was retroactive. It also seems like an incredible amount of money, $809,000 for services from a company that I personally have had more run-ins with than anybody else in this entire county. They've called the sheriff on me, they've called the police on me. They've not allowed me in buildings. They have violated my secured rights over and over and over again. I have a question primarily of why is a service that is supposed to be armed and unarmed, which does not have jurisdiction, in our county buildings, the company that has been hired for whatever the, the security and purposes that they're supposed to uphold? Why is this not being done by the sheriff, which does have jurisdiction and should have the ultimate authority in that? Even when I'm confronted by them, the first thing they do is they threaten, they've threatened me, intimidated, coerced, forced, you name it, to try to make me comply with what are my secured rights. And yet, the first thing they do is they want to call another jurisdiction, which is the sheriff's department. I'd like this board to really reconsider them as a contract for securing or providing protection in a facility like the county offices.
Okay. Thank you.
On item 15, we have Ken Giato.
Ms. Giato.
As I indicated at public comment, I've been dealing with my mother-in-law and, and her roommate, and so I'd like to say, please approve the number 15 item. It's been, it's very beneficial to them, and so having personal experience in how this, dealing with all this, it was a little difficult getting it started, but I found they, they're, it's helping them a great deal. And it, and if it's helping them, then anybody else that gets the service, it would, it's definitely going to be helping them as well. And, oop, I forgot to put 16 on there. I just want to say real quick on 16, I, I would appreciate that. I agree that the sheriff's office should be doing it and not a private entity. The private entity, the people that work for them are great people. I've talked to them a number of times, don't want them to lose their job, but sometimes they tend to go a little overboard on things and, you know, on the mask thing. We really need to get that kind of situated. A, a private, private individual such as myself shouldn't have to be forced, and I don't know what the answer to that is, to put, put a mask or not put a mask on. It's very confusing in that respect. Thank you.
Thank you.
And on item 21, we have Cindy Martinez.
Ms. Martinez. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I want to consolidate all of my comments about 19, 20, and 21, because it goes to the same thing that we've been talking about since all of this nonsense began. May I have the overhead, please, Madam Clerk? I'm going to show a page, number seven, out of the December 14th agenda. And this was 40, over $40 million of coronavirus money that was funneled. And when Commissioners Hartung and Lucy were speaking to its allocation, characterized it as money that was being for the benefit of the community. And as I commented then, last year, that almost 75% of this money goes towards your Cares Campus in the homeless effort. And now today, we're talking about in number 21, why are you sending money, why are you sending money to Reno Balloon Race? Why are you sending money for suicide prevention when the government actions is what's created the chaos and carnage to our citizens and to the, and to our economy? So today, you're seeking to add, what is it? May I have that again, please, Madam Clerk?
The overhead, please.
Adding a total of, what is it, 79, 7, 7, $7,971? 70, good grief, $7,971,644 for the Cares Campus. And that is for, what did it say? 28 new positions? 28 new government employees? That's where the growth in the economy is, in hiring new government employees. And of course, along with that comes PERS, comes insurance. And by bloating these, these budgets, when the bottom falls out, which it is going to, when the bottom falls out, we're going to be in a worse position than we were than after the, the crash of 2008. And if you recall, many employees lost their jobs. And I remember in my capacity, in my position, I went through town and I watched many people who had lost their jobs. This is, this is absolute insane. It's unsustainable. And moreover, putting stuff into a block vote is representative, I think, of lazy governance, because you're unwilling to put this on the record and discuss it verbally so the citizens can have a record on YouTube? In addition to that, it's apparent violation to me of decisions made ahead of time, in apparent violation of the open meeting law.
Thank you.
That's everybody I have signed in.
Okay. I'll bring it back to the board. We have a motion and, and a second. Commissioners, any other discussion on these items? Before we vote, what I will say is, we had the sheriff doing, for item number 16, we had them, and because of budget cuts and lack of staffing at the sheriff's office, we had to find an alternative. So that's, that's where we are today. So, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Manager, that takes us now to item number 24, if you would.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is the public hearing section. Item number 24 is a public hearing pursuant to NRS 277.050 to consider any objections to the resolution of intent to execute an easement deed granting the following easements to the Trekkie Meadows Water Authority. An exploratory well easement totaling plus or minus four square feet, a conditional water facilities easement totaling plus or minus 10,000 square feet for a production well and wellhouse, and a temporary construction easement totaling plus or minus 22,415 square feet on APN 534-450-05, part of Sugarloaf Peak Open Space, at the appraised value of $3,450. Possible approval of said easement deed, and if approved, authorize the Chair to execute the deed to that effect.
Okay. Thank you. I will open the public hearing. Mr. Crump, will you take us into this? Will you explain what's happening here? I mean, I've read all of these documents. I, I'm, I'm a little vexed on, on much of it, but I, I'd really like to understand. really like to understand what is going on, from staff's perspective.
Thank you for, for the record, Eric Crump with Washoe County's Community Services Department. Today, we're here to consider any objections to a resolution that the county commission approved back on the December 14th. It's for two easements on a Washoe County parcel 534-45005. It's part of our Sugarloaf Peak Open Space. Tamwa has requested an exploratory easement, roughly four square feet, and then a conditional facilities easement, and then a temporary construction easement to construct both the exploratory well and the facility. So the idea, the way it's styled here in the staff report, it's a exploratory well that will automatically roll into a facilities easement should Tamwa's, should the exploratory well be favorable for a production well. As I understand it, we do have some representatives from Tamwa here that can answer some of those pieces, but as I understand it, the well will ultimately serve both new and existing customers. I would like to point out that this item was heard by our Open Space and Regional Parks Commission at their last meeting last Tuesday, January 4th. They are an advisory board and had recommended to this board approval of only the exploratory well and the temporary construction well. They had some questions regarding, they wanted Tamwa to come back, had some questions regarding drawdown of the aquifer and alignments of some of the water facilities that would come out of the permanent facility. I would like to remind, or would like to mention to this board that Tamwa does have a blanket easement over this parcel for water facilities. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Staff's recommendation to the Park Commission and to this board is approval of these easements.
Okay, I appreciate that. And this is in District 4, so I'm kind of familiar with what's going on here. Why did this have to go to the Parks Commission to begin with? Because, I mean, this is, really, we're talking about an easement that already exists. Am I correct in that?
It's somewhat of a gray area. There's a blanket easement for access, and one could argue that it's for underground utilities. This easement contemplates an above-ground well and wellhouse, and I think, you know, Tamwa and ourselves wanted to be fully transparent. We followed our parkland easement policy. This easement is a request on parkland, and so therefore, we took it to Park Commission, much like many of the other easements on.
Okay, it's my understanding that the Parks Commission, after they drilled the exploratory well, the Parks Commission wants to hear back from Tamwa?
That is correct.
Why?
Again, the two concerns that I heard during the meeting were, they wanted more information in regards to the actual production of the well and the potential drawdown. There was a public comment at Park Commission by an adjacent property owner who was on a well, and they also had some questions concerning the alignment of any of the water infrastructure that would come from this wellhouse, and potential impacts to the open space and the trail. Again, these, these would likely fall under the blanket easement, they would be below ground, and it is staff's opinion that they would not interfere with the trail system that is on that property.
Okay. I will tell you, having served on Tamwa for a number of years since I got elected, Tamwa has been extremely responsible, and look at the, look at how we have reconditioned the Galena Fan. The Galena Fan was down tremendously, and we have, Tamwa brought that back. Just, I mean, it's, it's truly amazing what Tamwa has accomplished, and I know that we're already replenishing the aquifer in the Spanish Springs Valley at certain wells. Who do we have here from Tamwa? Christian, talk to me just briefly about Tamwa's position on protecting domestic wells, because I know, I know we have gone to great lengths to protect domestic wells, to make sure that domestic well owners were not harmed when Tamwa put in a municipal well, even when we owned senior water rights.
That's right. For the record, Christian Croft, Truckee Meadows Water Authority. Yeah, we take domestic well owners into consideration under any instance where we have new wells in construction, or in this case, exploration. We've run numerous models to make sure that any impacts to domestic wells, if there are any, will be minor. That goes into site selection, it goes into pumping rates, sustainability. So our initial groundwater modeling efforts, in this case, show that the nearest domestic well owner would experience roughly a half to maybe a foot of seasonal drawdown, and then, seasonal, which would recover. And then, after about 20 years, under our typical or estimated groundwater pumping, they'd experience maybe three feet after 20 years. So, very minor. We wouldn't move into the area and put a production well if we had any indication that it would be extreme drawdown for any of the neighboring domestic wells. We take it very seriously.
Talk to me briefly, I know the well that you're referring to, are we monitoring that well? Do we periodically go out and look at the static water level and the depth of the well?
We do, the old Donovan well, yes, we do.
Yes. I'm talking about the domestic wells.
Domestic well, yes. The closest one, we do not, but the next closest one, Dan Herman has allowed us over the last probably 15 or more years to monitor his well, both water quality and water level. We've seen water levels rise in that zone in North Spanish Springs, upwards of five to 10 feet over the last 15 to 20 years. And part of that is that responsible stance that Tamwa takes to make the resource whole and sustainable for the long term.
And use water conjunctively, where we're using as much surface water as we can, then, and much of what Tamwa owns, a lot of, not much of, but a lot of what Tamwa owns flows by on a daily basis, and so we, we don't use all the water rights that we currently have secured, and we have, in my opinion, maintained the aquifers in a very responsible manner. The well that you're referring to, from the one constituent, my understanding is, is that it has 130 feet of static water level?
His water level is roughly, I think, the most recent water level's around 95 feet, and I think his, I think his.
No, 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 130 feet deep.
Right, and his total depth is around 240.
240 feet, right. Not, not, not depth from the surface, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the depth of water in his well.
Right, roughly 100 feet, 140 feet of water available.
Yeah, wow, okay.
So we're talking only roughly three feet of additional or reduction in that available water over 20 years.
And Tamwa's not only monitoring the static water levels, but we're also monitoring water quality, are we not?
That's right, throughout the basin.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have any other questions for? Okay, all right. I'm going to open up public comment. Madam Clerk, would you please call public comment?
We have Dan Herman.
For the record, Mr. Herman and I have known each other for probably at least 25-plus years.
That's a true statement, and thank you for your service, Mr. Chairman. I'm pretty much in favor of what they're doing here. I kind of like the way the Parks Department was conscientious about, let's do exploratory well, let's go ahead and get the testing done, and I don't know how you're going to do the production volume out of the, how much water you're going to take out, I just, that's beyond me, and representatives from Tamwa, Christian, which came up and spoke, has pretty much assured me that my water level is not going to go down, and so I just want to put it on the record that Tamwa has assured me that there will not be any significant detriment to my domestic well that's located approximately 1,300 feet away from the proposed production well. And the chairman of the Board of Directors of Tamwa assured me that also. So, one of the things I am concerned about, and I pounded on this for the last couple of months at different meetings, is the lack of notification to the citizens. I don't think this went out to the 200 well owners that are probably within this valley or within that aquifer, which I understand there's a bunch of different aquifers, but the citizens have not been involved in this process, and I think they should. So again, I'm in favor of the exploratory well, I think it's going to be a benefit to existing water users. There's a lot of development going in and out there, specifically Harris Ranch, which I believe is four to 500 houses adjacent to the Donovan pit area, and, but I'm the closest domestic, or second closest domestic well, so I just want to be protected. Thank you very much.
Understood. Thank you so much. And for the record, I am the chairman of the Truckee Meadows Water Authority, the Board of Directors there, so, and I, and I did, I assured Mr. Herman, and I have no issue with this, Tamwa has been extremely responsible. I mean, I, I am beyond pleased to serve for such a great organization that has been a great steward, in my opinion, of the water resources in the valley, so I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm honored to do that. And I'm also, just one last comment, because I know how Tamwa does these, Tamwa deals with these kinds of things. These wells are not pumped exclusively, there's a lot of conjunctive use that occurs. We use a lot of surface water. We're doing it out in Verdai right now, we're trying to get, you know, we heard Commissioners about a pump station that will help take a lot of pressure off the groundwater in those resources in Verdai, so I see this as just another move that direction. Mr. Edwards, talk to me briefly, or Mr. Crump, talk to me briefly about having to potentially come back to us about, once they get done with, with the exploratory well, what do we, what do we have to, what do we have to do? Because I don't, I don't, I mean, the Parks Commission, I see their, I see their role as a, you know, obligatory in terms of surface, but, but the groundwater rights, Tamwa owns huge amounts of groundwater rights in the, in the Spanish Springs Valley, as they do in many valleys around the region, and we're not even close to having those groundwater rights maxed out.
Thank you. For the record, Eric Crump with Washoe County's Community Services. Like I said, the Open Space and Regional Parks Commission is advisory in nature, so they just make recommendations to this board, and I talked about that recommendation early on. What's in front of you today is both an easement for the exploratory well, and then a conditional easement for the facilities, and I'll read it right out of the easement deed that is included in the packet. The conditional water facilities easement, if testing demonstrates suitability for a production well as determined by grantee, grantor grants to grantee and its respective successors assigns leases and contractors a permanent and non-exclusive easement and right of way. So basically, if the exploratory well produces based on how Tamwa feels it should produce, it rolls right into, into that, so Tamwa would notify us if something changes or if it produces based on.
But it's my understanding that the Parks Commission wanted Tamwa to come back to them, I mean, it can be informational, I don't have an issue if Tamwa wants to go back to the Parks Commission for informational purposes, I have no issue with that, but I don't, I don't see the Parks Commission as having purview over a situation like this.
Correct. Like I said, they're advisory, it is ultimately this board's decision whether or not to grant these easements, but we can certainly go back to the Park Commission with information.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you so much. Commissioners, any other questions? Mr. Edwards.
To follow up with what was just being discussed, if you do decide you wanted them to report back to the Parks Commission for informational purposes, I would recommend that that simply be via letter or other common form of communication, rather than trying to build that into the lease or.
Yeah, I don't want to build that in, I don't want to build that in either. I just, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to conflate this in any way, shape, or form. I appreciate that. Okay, yes, Mr. Lucy.
Mr. Chair, if you're, if you're prepared.
I'm ready.
All right. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the easement deed granting the following easements to the Truckee Meadows Water Authority. An exploratory well easement totaling in for plus or minus four square feet, a conditional water facilities easement totaling in plus or minus 10,000 square feet for a production well and wellhouse, and temporary construction easement totaling in plus or minus 22,415 square feet on APN 534-450-05, part of the Sugarloaf Peak Open Space, at the, at the appraised value of $3,450, and authorize the chair to execute the deed to that effect. And please notify staff to pass along to the Parks Advisory Commission that decision has been made.
Okay. Thank you, I will second that motion. Commissioners, any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second, we have heard public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That takes us now, Madam Manager, thank you so much, everyone. That takes us to item number 25. Madam Manager.
Item number 25 is an introduction and first reading, and I will turn it over to our county clerk.
This, should it be introduced, will be bill number 1869, an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Washoe County Code relating to county commissioner election districts by establishing five county commissioner election districts that are equal in population as practicable and providing other matters properly related thereto.
Okay. Okay, before we move into this, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We have nobody signed in.
Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, I will entertain.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lucy.
I move that we, the board introduce and conduct the first reading of the ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Washoe County Code relating to county commission election districts by establishing five county commissioner election districts in accordance with the 2020 Federal Dysenial Census, and NRS 244.1014 and 244.018, that are equal in population as practicable, and providing other matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto, and approves at the public hearing and second reading and ordinance for January 25th, 2022.
Okay.
Introduced, and that would be bill 1869.
1869, thank you so much. Okay, I will close the public hearing, and that takes us now to item number 26. Madam Manager.
Item number 26 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Okay, thank you so much. Madam Clerk, will you please call public comment?
First up, we have Nicholas St. John.
Mr. St. John, welcome back.
For the record, Nicholas St. John, as much as I've been up here today, maybe I should consider running for, for office. I'm just kidding. Because of the three-minute limitation, I come with, as you would know, a number of issues, and typically am stopped out from really bringing all the issues that I have or concern, so I get to sit through a lot of the entire meetings so that I can do the, do as many of these as I can. The current issue that I have, that I would like to have you address, is, we, the people, demand a hard, unchanging definition of what it is to be vaccinated for the purpose of truthful reporting of COVID cases. Their narrative was that if you had both Pfizer or Moderna shots, or the Johnson &amp; Johnson single shot, that you're considered vaccinated. Now because of such a high infection rate of vaccinated people with the Omicron variant, that they are now being reclassified as unvaccinated, so that it skews the numbers to continue to propagate the hoax that the vaccine works, and people are not considered vaccinated unless they now have the first booster. Moving the goalposts is not acceptable, and we demand this county put an end to it. We demand an answer to which each, whether each commissioner does or does not believe that a vaccination creates antibodies in which it protects a person from being infected. believe that a vaccination creates antibodies in which it protects a person from being infected by the virus it is supposed to be protecting the people from. If you do believe it is supposed to protect a person from getting infected, why are you now accepting that this particular vaccine does not create antibodies, does not keep a person from getting infected, does not keep a person from becoming contagious, and does not even prevent a person from dying from the SARS-CoV-2 virus?
Thank you.
Next up, we have Kenji Otto.
Welcome back, Mr. Otto.
Thank you, and congratulations to both of you. I'd like to thank Eric Brown, Duane Smith, and Commissioner Gene Herman on working with me on the Crystal Canyon Boulevard issue of quieting the road, although, and, you know, not everybody's going to get what they want. So, but we're going to see how this works out. I really didn't expect $70,000 to be spent. I wasn't, I was kind of hoping not, that we could do it a lot cheaper, but it is what it is. I would also recommend that if the commissioners consider reevaluating old requests for science and things of that nature, based on my findings, my understanding is NDOT was the source for the county, and Trucking Meadows, I got my sources from Trucking Meadows Fire Department and the sheriff. They varied, and they were different. And I didn't even go to REMZA. And I'm, and based on what I've learned, they all need to be asked, or, and I might recommend that the commissioners respectfully consider developing a database for the county to keep track of this information, and not saddle it with any of the, any one particular agency, but place it under your information systems so that they can just keep it handy for these agencies to have available to them, so they have accurate information. As I said, we had deaths, and those weren't identified. And those are the first thing that should have been identified. We had children involved, not identified, should have been invited. Those are the second thing, or the first, first, second thing that should have been identified. And then, if, respectfully, if, I'll ask you, Commissioner Hartung, since you're now the Chair, consideration of removing the metal detectors. Also, county policy regarding masks within public county facilities, it varies all over the place. Who's enforcing it, who's not? You know, the public shouldn't have to. We go to, I go to all these public places, and I don't have to wear my mask or a mask. I've been exposed to thousands and thousands of people, and I know some of them had the COVID. I haven't ever gotten it. I don't have the shot. I don't want the shot. I don't want to wear the mask. But, you know, that's my, that's my thing. But don't force me because somebody else is afraid. They're wearing a mask. They got the shot. Anyway, and thank you to the senior services people for everything they do. And I would like to talk to Kitty Jung about ideas.
Thank you.
Cindy Martinez.
Welcome back, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you. For the record again, Cindy Martinez commenting in my capacity as a private citizen. And, and no, Chair Hartung, governance is not easy. It's not designed to be easy. And I was a law enforcement officer for a very long time, and I know what it's like to experience slings and arrows. It's part of the job. And I understand too that when people were calling me a jackbooted thug, they were making those comments at my badge, not at who I was. So, understand that when we comment here, it's about your role. We don't really know many of you personally. Some of you would do. But you represent the only point of addressing correction for what is gravely wrong. And what's unfortunate for me is that I don't enjoy coming here. I'd rather be doing other things. I lament many times that I was, had plans for art classes and going to Hawaii. I'm not going to Hawaii because I'm not going to stick anything up my nose or in my arm. My world has voluntarily become smaller because of the compliance measures that have limited where I can go and what I can do. Admittedly, the government of Washoe County does many good things. We heard about good things. Our law enforcement is the thin blue line between anarchy and the citizens, and that's breaking down. But understand, what I was told when I was working is that sometimes one aw shit wipes out 1,000 attaboys. And that's why I'm here continuously since last year, haranguing about this coronavirus stuff. Because what's happening, I don't know if you're tracking any of the legislation that's being considered across the country, but right now in Washington State, in addition to the 300 FEMA mobile vaccination vans that Governor Inslee deployed to capture the 34% who remain unvaccinated, in addition to that, they're proffering or they're presenting legislation to empower their law enforcement to involuntarily detain unvaccinated citizens and incarcerate them in quarantine facilities until they submit to vaccination. That, I submit to you, Madam Manager, Madam County Clerk, and Commissioners, that is tyranny. It is unacceptable. And we've been asking you to honor your constitutional duty and your oath to prevent that from happening. There's similar legislation that's being proffered in New York State that is even more onerous than that. And similarly, the citizens in Seattle are walking in the streets. They're protesting. The citizens of Albany are in the streets protesting, and I'm sure you know about the protests that are going on in Europe. You can't find any of that on mainstream media. I can tell you that we are tracking it all over the world. We are in grave danger. And as I told you on December 15, you are the firewall between us and tyranny.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
I have nobody else signed in.
Okay. I will close public comment and bring it back to the board. That takes us to item number 27. Madam Manager.
Item 27, our Commissioner and County Manager's Announcements, Reports, and Updates to Include Boards and Commission Updates, Requests for Information, or Topics for Future Agendas.
Okay, do you have any such items?
I have one small comment to make, if you allow me. There was some question about retroactive items on the agenda, and I wanted to point out that many of these items, and there are details included in the staff report, but many of these items include instances where we receive subgrant awards from the state, for example. There are several of these examples on today's agenda. We receive those subgrant awards past the effective date, so we, it's out of our control whether or not we bring this item before the period begins. So, you'll see that noted in several of the staff reports today, and I just wanted to point that out for clarification. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Commissioners, anyone else? Mr. Lucy, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things, I would be remiss if I didn't bring this up, and I apologize for missing it earlier in our agenda, in the consent agenda today, in item 8D1. We, I forgot to acknowledge our financial staff, our comptroller's office, and our finance department, our budget department. Once again, you know, whether or not individuals believe we spend our money correctly or incorrectly, our budgetary staff members and our comptroller's office do a phenomenal job of managing those dollars efficiently and effectively through many rigorous audits and their own self-adherence to the rules, and being very conservative in a financial nature. And once again, for the first, for the 39th year in a row, we've run, we have received the Annual Certificate of Achievement for the Excellence in Financial Reporting, and that is the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association that has bestowed that award upon us. So, a big round of applause to all of our staff in budget, and also in our comptroller's office for all the hard work and continued to manage a budget of our size here in Washoe County. That's very, it's very tedious, and a lot of work goes into that. So, I want to acknowledge that staff for the work they do. Yeah, thank you. Big round of applause for them. Number two, Mr. Otto did bring this up, Meals on Wheels. Our senior services staff through HSA, when we consolidated it from senior services just into human services, from birth to death, we believe in taking care of people. But I think it does do, they are owed respect for their continued diligence. Quite often, many mornings, I driving, when I'm driving into the office, I see the Meals on Wheels trucks pulling out and heading out, and those individuals, rains, you know, snow, sleet, nasty, whatever, are driving and making sure that those individuals get those meals. And it's one of the, it's one of the services that we provide here for our seniors in our community that is quite often overthought and shouldn't be, because it is a huge, huge resource for a lot of individuals. And so, I want to thank those drivers. I know through the last snowstorm, you know, between Christmas and New Year, those individuals drove all the time, make sure those individuals on nasty roads to get and walk through nasty conditions to get those people, those meals. So, thank you for all their, the staff for all their work. And then, one last thing that Ms. Martinez brought up, you know, on Sunday, January 9 this year, it was Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. One of the things that we, this commission has always been, is supportive of our public safety individuals, our law enforcement, our firefighters, our, but, but law enforcement truly is the enforcing body. They maintain our jail, they maintain all of our services in the incorporated area, which is an expansive 6,000-square-mile area, and they do a phenomenal job at that with very, you know, people say they have a giant budget, but realistically, the route for the amount of budget that they have, for the size that they have to curtail to, it's very limited. And so, I want to thank all of our law enforcement officers for all the time, and their families, for what they do, because not often enough do they get that recognition, and more often than not these days, they are sought out to be the enemies, and they are not. They're not the enemies. They are more of the individuals that are truly out there to just protect and serve, and they do a great job to do that. So, hopefully, we can acknowledge them for their Law Enforcement Day on January 9, 2022. So, that's all my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your election, sir, to Chair. I look forward to serving with you for the next period of time.
Thank you. I too look forward to serving with you. And on that note, I want to thank you for the job that you've done. It has not been easy. You have served in a tumultuous time. It is very difficult. It has been a tough scenario on a daily basis. It's not just, you know, it's not just one sort of single event where you say, okay, how do we get through this event? It's been a protracted event. And I don't disagree with some of the folks that have made comment. I'm, I'm in lockstep with some of the measures that have been put in. But you've done a great job with respect to how you have approached it and balancing everything. I know it has been difficult with your home life, with your family, with the loss of a very close family member. You know, you did a, you did a really, really good job, and I would have been happy to allow you to stay as Chair for another two years. It would be fine with me. But, that said, I, Mr. Otto brings up, and staff, I'd like to talk about this. He brings up an interesting, interesting comment about tracking accidents, and I don't know how we would go about doing that for the simple reason that when you have an accident in a specific jurisdiction, it's not just a jurisdictional issue. So, if you have an accident on the Pyramid Highway, it can be NHP that responds. It's not necessarily the Sheriff's Office. But he makes a good point that it, that fire does respond. But the problem is, is that if, and I'll use Pyramid Highway as the example, if Station 46 is out on a call, City of Sparks responds for us. So, we don't always have all of the details in those accidents. So, it could be a little more problematic of trying to track the accidents, the level that occurred, were there injuries and et cetera. Sometimes, it's easier to track those injuries because, of course, REMZA has to respond regardless of the jurisdictions. But it's, it's difficult. If something happens within the City of Reno's boundaries, City of Reno, RPD is going to respond, and then Reno Fire is going to respond. So, we don't, we don't get, we don't get that information. There is, and it's always been this way. This is not something that has just occurred. There's just been a disconnect with how that information is collected. And I know out in Spanish Springs, I have asked for reports on certain incidents that have occurred on the Pyramid Highway, and it can be very difficult getting them from the state because they reside in the state's database. But it's, but it's an interesting concept, and I, I think it has, it certainly merits thought to say, how could we, how could we do this? Because I, I don't disagree. Tracking these kinds of things is imperative to understanding how we need to change either a particular design or try to change behavior. So, I'm going to try to work backwards with staff. I appreciate the comments. Commissioners, any, from you, Commissioners Jung or Vice Chair Hill?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jung? Fell off? Okay, all right. Well, we still have a quorum, so that is good. Okay, seeing no other comments, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone.